Obviously, for your budget discussions two weeks ago, you have a small version, smaller version of the same document. It does currently still have the same information on it that was on the larger sized document. And you were going to revisit with Mike, um, your discussion or determination on the two new firefighters.
Okay. Um, and where would this fall? Oh, there it is. I see it.
Yeah, they are on the, they are definitely on the worksheet. I did not remove them at this point.
Okay, alright, okay. And I guess, um, alright, that's, that's call salary, alright, training pay, okay. Um, was there, is there anything that you guys want to discuss with him in regards to this?
Yes.
Alright.
Why two? Do they come into only twos?
Why two?
Why not one?
Two because if we, we have two, we, they'll fill out the twenty-four hour shift, so there's a third person on, twenty-four hours a day, thirty-sixty-five days a year.
Because I, I think this is a, and don't misunderstand what I'm saying, I think it's a bit of a hoax. If we sign up for this as a board and put it on the warrant, or that what goes through the budget committee process next, it looks like they're gonna make thirty-six thousand dollars in the first year, when in fact, it's not a first year. They're gonna, if at best, they probably wouldn't start. If you got to go ahead of town meeting, you wouldn't probably have anybody, even if you had them in the wings, they probably wouldn't start till a month afterwards, about July first.
Yep.
So, we're talking about a, not even six month, we're talking about a five month program at that.
This number does represent only a five month, um, schedule.
Well, I'm going X way.
Okay. Sorry, I thought you were thinking it was the full year.
No, 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 no.
Okay.
So, next year.
Oh, I see where you're going.
Next year.
Apologize for that, so.
We're increasing next year's budget by thirty-six, seventy, hundred and fifty thousand dollars in pay, plus benefits, schooling, and, uh, equipment, whatever, it takes uniforms. And that's basically the start of this, is right here. That's my projection would somewhere be, because if you double the thirty-six times, that's seventy-two, uh, times two, I mean, that's, it's gonna be
Be even.
Hundred and fifty thousand dollars minimum, probably closer to one sixty, next year that we're obligated. Now, in remembering, of course, history, my memory's gone, but several years ago, we had a program that if we put some people on, we could hire them for three years, or two and a half years of program at a reduced rate, uh, for the fire department, and then, at the end of that term, they can either stay if we saw, saw fit, if you came and said, I wanna keep these people, or they can move on, because they were like in a training program. Is, am my memory illude me, or did I have a bad cocktail?
What we, what we've had is, we've had, uh, students from the college that would be interned with us, that we've had for years. Problem now is, again, because every department in the state's asking now, and so therefore, they're hard to come by. So, we don't have any legislation. Because a lot of guys, a lot of departments are using them as their, their extra help, and, and because, uh, like people say, uh, towns around us, they don't pay, they, they, that, they stay, get to stay there, get the experience, so they can, they can move on to wherever they choose to move on to. Uh, but that's how they get their experience at the college.
So, why wouldn't we be, since the college is located in this town, why wouldn't we be one of the first choices for them to be close to, especially if they came from the northern or southern part of the east and western part of the state, rather than commuter, you know?
Yeah, why aren't they coming here? That's gonna be my question.
It is.
Why aren't they coming here?
Rules.
Rules?
Yeah.
What rules?
We have a, very, our, our student program is strict. We're, we're no stricter than, well, a lot, we're no stricter than the other department. So, meaning, you know, when you're having a duty day, so you're with us, you're with us for, well, we'll say you have two weeks on. During the two weeks, you're not out until morning, you're not out doing anything else. You're, you're in our program, and then you get to learn, you ride with your crews, and you stay with your crews. Other departments do the same thing, but they pay their people on per call basis. We've never done that in the history of this department. That can be a change, but that's not something we've addressed. So, therefore, a lot of it comes down to is, we are strict, we make sure that they have a, because we don't, we're responsible in the end if, if something were to happen, no matter how you cut it. You're still, it's college, you still like to be able to have honestly, all the things. So, therefore, for us, that's, that's what's happening.
Well, I'm not telling you your job, because I certainly don't know it. But it would seem to me that, that this is the first time I've heard about this pay, and I've been sitting here for a few years. I assume that they did get paid, a little. Uh, I assume that they stayed with us, I thought, in my head, I had this, that they, they, when they were here at the fire department, they say
They live here.
They live here. So, we're in fact paying for their living.
Correct.
So, there, that is a force of income, plus, how do we carry them if they're not receiving money, per se? How do we carry them on a FICA insurance? How do they, under your workman's comp? How does that happen if we're not paying them?
No, no, they're the volunteer.
Right.
Volunteers get covered under our insurance the same way. Okay, they, they're covered under that, under that same umbrella as, as, if you'd be a volunteer or student.
So, how much are other departments paying their people?
That's, I don't honestly know that. I know that some do, some don't. Compensation was based on, you have to live here for nothing. You don't have to get yourself a dorm room, you don't have to get yourself a college room, or anything like that. This is what you say, your, your, in your return, you work in a fire department to get the experience.
Okay, and so, let me take it one more step.
Yep.
And I know I'm being kind of a pest right now.
No, that's
Have we gone down to the college upon the beginning of their program at the era, when they ever do their solicitation for the upcoming classes, and try to put this, I hate to use the word sell this program, but put this program out, so the students know it exists?
Yes. So, when this sort of program started, there was like three departments, four departments doing it, around this whole entire area. Thing is, now is a lot of departments doing it. Now, since January four, there's twelve, fourteen, fifteen, eighteen departments doing it. If you were eighteen years old, and you could grab in a department that doesn't supervise you as much, don't have to do EMS calls, and you still get the big, buy the big red truck, which one would you choose? Would you choose the department that's structured, that'll top you, making sure you do your job, meet your goals?
I guess that, that would depend on my individual thought process, or where I wanted to end up, that I go to college, have a good time, and I go there to learn something.
I understand it, all our students that go to our, that have come to our program and they finished with them, all have jobs.
Let me ask you something, because, um, obviously, I'm back to the call fireman again, right? Remember, I kinda proposed something?
Yes.
Um, just as a thought. And I see that we have a part-time call salary that obviously is, um, I don't know if it's gonna be fully used or not.
Yep.
But did you, and again, I'm, I'm just, this is kinda, I'm thinking as we're having this conversation, but have you thought about, um, offering, is it a stipend, can you call it a stipend, or, I mean, I'm just thinking, this is
To be able to come with us?
Right, I'm, this is a conversation that we're having, I don't know.
No, so, the thing is, we've never had The problem isn't just getting to the call.
Sure.
The problem is getting to go on the calls. Okay, so, we got people that will come, apply, get on, and we never see them again. Apply, get on, proceed.
No, but I'm talk, no, no, I'm talking about the students.
Oh, students?
No, no, I, I, I understand it, I understand, and, and I'm, and I really still feel, okay, that you're not getting the call people because, um, you're, you're, I don't wanna say you're, you, you want them to overtrain, but as I said before, you got, you got some kid that wants to ride on the big red fire truck, alright? Isn't really wants, wants to see if he wants to be a fireman, but, you know, you can train him to pull hose. I mean, doesn't, I don't think it takes a lot to pull a hose, but you know, but that's enough for another subject, that's for another time. What I'm thinking is, is that if you have these students that are living there, and I understand, they've got free board and room, alright? And that's great, okay? But I'm wondering if there shouldn't be some, I don't know if I wanna call a stipend, what?
Renumeration. Renumeration, other than the woman, boy.
Right, and, and whether it's based on the call, or whether it's based on when there have to be available for call. I, I'm just, you know, all I'm trying to do is throw something out there to maybe encourage, and I don't know what other fire departments are doing. I find it hard to believe you can't find that out.
No, I, I didn't say I couldn't.
Okay.
No, 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 I just, I haven't searched out to find that out, because, be honest, we've, we've never had an issue getting students.
Sure, sure.
The fire service as a whole is, is no different than any healthcare system, it, it's
All changing.
My people, and students are not on the same way in meeting with, you know, the faculty at the school, they're trying to get people to come to the school. Remember, for a long, this time, the tech school on the hill was, I say tech school, it's not
I know.
Really college, I apologize.
That's okay, tech school is good.
When I went there, it was a tech school.
Yeah.
They, they had, um, this only program in the area, matter of fact, it almost all on the wing, so they had, um, a, a, quite a calling with the amount of people.
Sure.
Now, what is happening is, you got, now our, our mains doing it, you know, Massachusetts has a place, there's a couple in the Hampshire now, so it's getting more diversified, and they don't have to go, or, or there's not as many people, or, or, there's not a, like, only one location to go, but you have to get. So, that, that also, their volume drops, so therefore, it's, it's a pool that is, is, is smaller than it used to be. So, that's, that's what we're running into.
Yep.
I have no problems offering, I just don't, it's like the job market right now, within the fire service, they see, they're offering stipends, they're offering, uh, come here to work, we'll give you ten thousand dollars.
Yeah, and we've seen that.
It's just because, you know, I don't know how to explain it, I just know that it's tough to get people to work. And now, we're starting to, something we've never done in our past, is hire people on certifications. And that was something you've never seen before.
Sure.
You're seeing local departments in our own area doing that, you're not, now, we're like, you got your, your EMT, good, we'll take care of the rest, because hopefully, when you come, we'll be able to retain you, or, as John has said, we'll contract you. We'll get you all the rest of your certifications, but, we need you to sign a contract.
So, a lot like what we've done with the police, if they're a non-certified police officer, we'll send them to the academy, but they, they're now, which we couldn't up to a certain point, they signed a contract to stay on for so many years, obviously. You know, I mean, I, I don't oppose that personally, because, um, we gotta, we gotta do it, what you gotta do, yeah.
And to, to go back on, on personnel.
Yep.
You like to, you work. I can use it, for instance, within the last seven days. We ended up with three paramedics in the back with a fourteen-year-old. That, that was not well off. Our patients are, are, are getting sicker. COVID as a whole has taken the stolen personnel in, in the, in the workforce all the way around, and I think it's just, it's just getting, it's just wearing on everybody, I don't know who it is.
It doesn't matter who it is, everyone is being affected by it, you're right.
So, we're finding our patients becoming sick. We're getting in the back by yourself, a lot of times, is also very difficult, trying to work at higher status, excuse me, higher status, our patient with multiple injuries. And also, adding another person is giving it more safety factor, and another thing, you know, we have an employee, we lifted up somebody the other day that was arched. This boy, you know, felt something, was okay, did nothing, and about it. We're running into that, our, our patients are not getting any smaller, which again, because we don't like getting out and doing things. That's why we're looking for this additional amount of personnel, running twenty-four hours a day, so we have the ability to take care of the people around us. And all around, it's being harder and harder for everybody, it doesn't matter if it's Belmont, Gilman, San Antonio, that, we can use the numbers and everything else today, to, to keep up with our numbers. And usually, it becomes harder, because, you know, we're, we're seeing that. And you know what's creeping back into our picture again now? Is that it's unfortunate.
Oh, well, that was just
And what happens is, it creeps away, and then it creeps back in.
What was that, you said?
Addiction.
That, 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 our, our overdoses are starting, they had kind of dwindled down, and now they're, they're popping back up again, and I'm not quite sure. I, I don't know what, why it does that.
I guess, and again, I, I don't know how the, I guess, my feeling is, if you had come for one, I could digest that, alright? Because we're already looking at an eight percent, alright? Um, I believe, is it next, this come, next, how do we say, next summer, or next spring, we start with, um, union negotiations again, am I correct?
Yes.
Alright?
Yep.
And, so you know, and we know it's not gonna go down, alright, be real, right? And, you know, we're looking at eight percent, I just, um
The hard part is with one, is how do we put that person in schedule?
Well, you know, in my mind, okay, in my mind, I was figuring, if you came for one, that person would be a night person. Because obviously, during the day, alright, there tends to be, either you're there, Deb's there, you know, they're just, there's, I wanna say more bodies, I don't know how else to put it, right?
I gotta tell you, last week, I mean, I've been spending more time in Albrechts than I've been in my office, it's just
Well, and, and
Crazy.
It has been crazy, okay, and, and I agree.
It's like losing weight.
It does, right, and that's
You know, when I'm, when I'm out beside the road on a bike with a fire truck, we wouldn't want our call guys, we're working a patient beside the road, that's unusual to see.
Right.
We, we, we had, you know, down in the initial A game, because we were on two high status patients on the other end of it.
I, I understand, I mean, there are gonna be those times, no matter how many people we have, you're always gonna have those times, alright? I think the whole purpose with this is finding that balance, and
We, again, I, I don't even know how to explain this one as well. We, we, we're calls, back-to-back calls. When the initial call comes up, crew's working that call, and a second call, third call, fourth call comes in. We have, we are running in the high thirties, almost, unfortunately, now, a second call every time I'm out. It's, 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 even dispatchers, like, you guys seem to, it's like somebody says, hey, I'm gonna call, why don't you call out?
Yeah.
We're always seem to be out on those when another one of call comes in. We have been, I, we're blessed, I mean, I feel, that we have a lot of very dedicated staff and people, because we're, we seem to be able to maintain without calling mutually very often, and we do, but we hold pretty well. It's just, I think it's, the volumes are starting to, it's not where we're on the cruise, and, and that's when we're trying to help.
So, looking at, you said a very experienced crew, and I would, I'm guessing by what you're telling us, that we're doing more EMT type calls than we have fire, fighting fires?
We do sixty-six percent of our calls are EMS.
So
We're almost seven percent.
That being said, of your present staff, how many are you looking, that might retire in the next year?
Next year?
Yeah.
Uh,
And I say might?
One, one staff can retire next year, that's it, other than myself.
So, if I'm
There is one right now that could retire. I believe that was the next year, we have two, because there'll be two attendants that can retire.
No, right.
Correct.
So, if you're educating people to fill those position, or move the ladder up, or move up the ladder, so that's
That's in hopes that's what happened, because we, we do have young crew, we have very talented crew. Other than I, my tour, all of the tenants that are, are looking, they'll be able to retire.
So, if I'm adding up, right?
Yep.
I would assume, your ass, your assistant chief, and your fire chief, that, your EMTs, so we're looking at tw, everyone that you have right now is an EMT.
Correct.
So, there's twelve EMTs in our department.
Correct.
Okay.
And you are the only
Nope.
No.
Deb, myself, and Victor, and then all eyes, Andy and Chuck.
Right, are paramedics.
Yeah, so it's twelve in all, twelve EMTs. Yep. Help me, guys.
I'm stuck on one.
You're stuck on one?
Stuck on one.
I'm stuck on one. Sonny? What do you suck on?
Stuck on a new hire, I guess you might say.
Yeah.
I'm against it, but
If, under the existing contract,
Yes.
if you were to, um, potentially hire one, say that was something that the board was able to agree to, we would have to make some adjustments if you were going to place them on a specific schedule regularly, correct?
We would, because, remember, the, the contract does do minimums. Right now, that person has not been negotiating on anything. Because right now, the contract says there'll be X amount of people, twenty-four hours a day, and two day people. So, that person right now has not been negotiated, or, I mean, we, we
Right, but if they were, if they were, um, so, in lieu of, so, very similar to the day shift person, they might be the, I don't know, maybe they work seven at night till seven in the morning type schedule on a, on a regular basis.
Yep.
That would be something that we'd have to, um, initially speak with the union about, to get their approval outside of negotiations for the next contract.
Or we wait till the next, right, till the contract, negotiations on the existing, or the next contract.
The, just so you're aware, the eight percent, um, that you see on the budget worksheet, does include those.
I, I figured that out after I said that, but, um, yeah, I understand that, yeah.
Let me back up and change the subject a minute, what did we decide on your vehicles? In your lodge proposal sheet, which I didn't bring with me, unfortunately.
You had agreed to, um, move the, um, command vehicle for the assistant chief into capital, and had asked, had told them that you couldn't support the boat or the utility.
That's what I thought.
Yeah.
And you're not, the, we're not looking at buildings for the
And we're gonna use the, um, municipal facilities, capital reserve, to take care of your roof issues, yeah, yeah.
I would like, can I step back on that a little?
Yeah.
And on that same, John, um, I would like you to take five minutes and come up and look at our utility, because if we're looking at anything, we'd be, the two vehicles are, the utility is, we've set it up now to get the quarters fixed on, to last us now a year. Our vehicle's getting plowed and, and, and used with the weight it's in, it's, it's getting tired. And that's why I would, if that minimum weren't in the two vehicles.
Well, I can't see why you can't take the vehicle that your deputy's driving right now, and move that down the line, and put a plow on that. Take the plow off the other truck and put it on it. I'd be glad to come look at it. I have no problem doing that at all. But I, I think there has, you know, I, I probably shouldn't say this to you, but I think with the availability of washing and cleaning, and those vehicles do set a lot, but they still should be cleaned, if anything, when they were new, or should have been oiled or undercoated, to facilitate some of the rust preventative methods that we're now
We do it every year, ever since the year you came forward and asked us to do it.
Because I just, what's the year of that, anyway, I'll come and talk to you about those, I just, at, at this point, I, we're looking at trying to save money, and not, not trying to step on the overall leadership of the town, to try to keep the tax rate down.
And that will modify the tax rate. That's not hard.
I, I understand that, it, it, but it's still money that's being spent out of that fund. That, to my way of thinking, is still tax dollars, because it doesn't go into the general account, I mean
Right, and I'm, I'm obviously, you know, wanna keep, we wanna keep good tabs on that, because probably, next year, we'll be ordering a
Ambulance?
ambulance, alright? And as we discussed before, we're probably gonna be talking, and again, I don't, probably don't know what I'm talking about, but we could be talking over four hundred thousand dollars by the time we're done, alright? With the increase in the vehicles, and just everything that goes with that, alright? And I just wanna make sure that we don't, you know, what is it, cut off our nose despite our face when it comes to an ambulance, that's for sure. As you say, we're more of a ambulance service at this point than a fire service. Have we ever, have, I'm gonna, I'm gonna raise a real bad
You're gonna ask for privatization.
I am. I'm gonna say, when do we get to the point that we look for privatization? The problem is, I would imagine, the private, privatization, people are probably having as much issues that we're having.
And you're asking it, can you, since they have contracted a private service, and they're one that's sending runs to Manchester, and they didn't show up for four months. Now, they have their own ambulance, because they're handling their calls, and they're trying to contact what they're gonna do next.
Right, I'm not surprised, especially through all of this, but this could change.
What brought this to mind in my way over the Lowe's the other day, in the parking lot, if you drive into Lowe's, and that little roadway in on the right-hand side, which used to be part of
Oh, yeah, there's a
There's a
That's Stewarts, yes.
Stewarts.
That's just a transport?
They do a lot of transfers out.
Yeah, that's the, just for transfers and stuff.
Yep.
Yeah.
That's, yeah, that's where they house that stuff, you know, this is, this is Trump, Trump or, 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 they have the old mobile companies now, it's all on the involved stores, but they're, they've, they partnered now with Rock, they, I mean, uh, and, and, there's a lot of partnerships coming together with what's happening with the COVID, because it's, it's personnel, it's So, you know, we, we talk about that same thing, is remember, now you're talking about a transfer of a parent, making thirty, forty, fifty dollars an hour now. Well, we're not gonna be able to
Okay, now, this is where my next conversation's going to go, you've seen, you brought that up.
Yep.
Alright? Um, this is the other thing that makes me a little leery about hiring more people, is that I know we're gonna be going to union negotiations, alright? And as we all know, we're gonna get hit with increase, alright? They're gonna, they're gonna want some, you know, they're gonna want an increase, I mean, it's the way it is. And I guess, my problem is, is that if we, I mean, granted, it doesn't affect this budget, but still, we gotta look down the road, alright? So, we add two more guys to this, then we go into new union negotiations, you know, it's important that we keep the people we have. They're well-trained, they're, you know, you gotta look out for the, the people we've had and people we've got, alright? And what makes me nervous is, now we add two more people on, then we go into union negotiations, and that increases by whatever, or you try to keep it under control, and they're not happy, and they go someplace else. So, it's, it's, it is a balancing act here. You wanna take care of who you have in order to retain them, but then, if we're adding a hundred and fifty-plus thousand dollars to the budget here for two more guys, and then do you not give your present people, because we've added, see what I'm saying? So, it's
I, I
I understand where you're coming from.
I'm just gonna add this, we, we, to, to, according to your face, we kick a can down the road. As time goes on, your number's gonna continue to increase.
I know.
So, you're right on your, your numbers for your, your budgets, yes, but your call volume's gonna increase too, okay? And, and they're going to be at a point, and I, I don't like when other places do this when I'm doing the same as this.
Yep.
There's gonna be a point when people have to wait. Remember, when we call nine-one-one, that's our worst day. When we sit there and say, I got a couple nine-one-one, that, that, I don't care if it's a headache, or somebody tore a limb off, that, that, that is their worst day. With our mutual aid partners just as busy as we are, somebody will have to wait. Understanding that wait, and, and, and it potentially is there, that could be as simple as, as a cut, or as harsh as a COVID.
But no matter what, Mike, we only have two ambulances.
I understand it, I, I understand it. But if we can't staff the second one, it's, you're gonna wait?
But even with two people, you're not gonna staff the second one, because three people on at night, isn't gonna staff two ambulances, it's still only one ambulance. It's gonna be able to leave, and I assume, either the third person's going with the first one, or the third person's staying back to, well, whatever the third person does, I don't know. Okay, I'm not a, I don't, I don't know what the third person does.
If a call person acquired, a third person, the person comes back and starts a situation. Usually, it can get one person to come back, if we're using our call guys.
Oh, so two, two vehicles are going out, you mean, on the call?
Sometimes, yes.
Okay.
Depending on how high the priority of the calls.
Alright.
Or say, well, give a good instance, my call, and one, one of my paramedics is a shit, does a lot of calls. And shit has, has been, uh, an amazing employee with us. You get some ambulance, the third person comes back, or the other person comes back. That way, they can stay in service, or be able to go on to have a call. The same thing is when, if, now, you say that one ambulance can't go on a call, or the third person, well, that's great. If I, I'm sitting at that station by myself right now, I'm gonna go to your house if you call me and say there's an emergency. I am going to start care.
Yeah.
You may not get that care to start without that, so, you know, you say, yes, I may not be able to transport you, but I am going to be able to start my emergency care, which means, if your relation stopped bleeding, or just sitting there, holding an old lady's hand, saying, it's okay, we're gonna get you to the hospital.
Sure, sure.
And, and we are all
So, in other words, if you had a couple students, however we acquire them, obviously, you don't now, so, if we looked at that, we might be able to entice someone, that would help. I mean, I understand a, a student isn't an EMT, although
They try to get through a
They try to, right.
Usually, the second year there are, remember, they're not there in the summer.
Right, right.
They do their summer fun time, like, that's what college does. So, then around there, during the summer.
All right. Well, we can beat this to death, guys.
I'm gonna have to go along with Sonny on this and say that we can't do it this year. I don't see how we can do it, because looking next year, it's not going to be, it's gonna be more money, it always is more money than next year, but I don't, I don't see how we can take two, if you're saying two's the answer, I understand that it probably is, but I don't see how we can afford to pay for it.
Well, um, would there, let me, I'm just gonna throw something else at you. Um, would there be monies enough in, I'm thinking the call salary, all right, Jean? If, if Mike was able to, I mean, at this point, probably the students are already placed. Um, would there, well, this is next year's, but this is, right, right. Would there be funds you think available to get him to possibly, um, I don't know, I don't know what we call it, a stipend, a?
Oh, they, they pay like a call company, so every time they went on a call, they'd get paid for the call.
An hourly rate.
So, I'll use Gilmoreton's for instance, Gilmoreton does that, that's how they, they pay their students for all the calls they're on.
Okay.
And stuff like that, so.
All right.
And I believe, can't open this one, but if, say it's there, duty day, the day they actually are there to work, we also pay them for that day.
Yeah.
I have to ask Chief Temple that, but I believe that's how that works.
Any presently have students?
No, well, they don't, but, you know, this is.
I, I'm not saying we, we couldn't get it, I'm not saying we can't have it, because there's still maybe some undecideds or someone that doesn't have any decisions yet, so. So, we can, we can definitely look into that.
I think that's a little bit of salesmanship. I mean, I don't know, um, you know, whether it's, I know they have put on different things at the college to entice, or, um, I know that the high school has, they've already had some, you know.
Yep, we can, we can reach out to Ben DeCary, he's the, um, uh, the, the professor up there that's running the program. And see what he has to say, what, what's out there, who's out there.
Is there?
So, if you're going to consider paying, um, the students for the calls that they go on and then the days that they're there as on duty. Last year, Mike's final number for part-time call was twenty-seven eight. Thirty-five was budgeted, so it's close. I mean, you're, you'd have to, I think you'd have to increase that line item by some in order to, especially if you were going, well, it's probably about nine months out of the year in reality, so.
And it won't be, it'll be bottom, the bottom, it'll be like, uh, somebody comes in to us with, you know, you know, so.
But under our special revenue balance fund, we have medical supplies and expenses, training classes. Could some, if you had to pull some money out of that fund, because you're training them, they are basically in training.
I don't think we're getting to mingle the two, can we, or can we change them around?
I mean, I'm thinking of a little of that money.
Well, I mean, you do take, you do take overtime funds, I mean, we budget, um, to come from special revenue, we have forty thousand that comes out for overtime as an offsetting revenue. What you could do is increase that line item and then add a, um, an offsetting revenue line for, um, part-time call to come from the special revenue fund and increase it.
That would, that would.
It would offset it, um.
That would, that saves us a lot of money, I think, in a lot of ways.
Well, I think.
Not a permanent answer, but.
No, it is not a permanent answer, it's just, I guess, I guess it's in my mind, okay? One, I can, I could have, I guess, digested, all right? Two is just, and I understand, all right? So, now what I'm trying to do, and again, knowing that the union negotiations are coming up, all right? And, and I'm, uh, just from what we've seen in town, what I've seen business-wise, you gotta take care of the people you got, all right? And I don't want to have to compromise. Not that I'm saying that these guys are going to get what they want, you know, get everything they want, but we have to look at the numbers, all right? And it's important that we retain the people that we have, all right? And I don't know what that's, number's gonna be, which makes me a little nervous, okay? And, um, you know, I think, I don't, I don't, I, I would feel if you could do a little salesmanship, get a couple students to.